Second meals there.
Okay, I have six thirty, I'm called to meet meeting number. Eighteen forty-five to order, these swings are playing in zoning commission. February twenty eighth at six thirty. We have a forum, we have three regular members here. Under added agenda items, we're gonna add. PZ twenty twenty-three dash zero five for a site plan modification. Under new business, we'll review it there. There is no legal notices for tonight's meeting. Public participation. So anyone from the public like to comment on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Or anyone online that would like to comment on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving right along, we're gonna go to the two approval of minutes. February fourteen, twenty twenty-three. Does anybody have any additions, changes or modifications?
No, sir.
I think if you could look on at line two thirty-two. It says, speaking of the business work, I think you need to add after speaking, maybe in favor of the business work?
Anything else here?
That's it.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting eighteen forty-four, which was held Tuesday, February fourteen, twenty twenty-three. At with the modification in line two thirty-two. After the word speaking, insert in favor for the word of.
There's a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Jim, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. We have no, have received applications, nothing under performance bonds, actions permanent extension to the motor acceptance. If you need a public hearing. We have a request to table it until. The meeting of March fourteen. Of PNC twenty twenty-three thousand two. Do you not have any new public hearings? No old business, so under new business, we'll discuss. Easy. Twenty twenty-three dash zero five. Okay. We're gonna receive it and hear it, okay? So this is for site plan modification. Twenty-seven reservoir avenue, Robbrook. Who's here to speak on the justice application?
It's I, Joe Sauerhopper. My pick. Full set of plans if anybody wants to see. The full set. Richard Frank was here, so he would want to say. We're simply removing. The softball field. And installing. A playground. And with that access, because it's gonna be an ADA playground. Access coming up. With the driveway. And then sidewalk connected sidewalk connect the pavilion. That's pretty much it, I mean, it's a, you know, it's flat, obviously, it's flat up there because it was softball field. And we're doing a little bit of drainage modification on the drainage. To do some under drains underneath the sidewalk. It's or the sidewalk, the place gate. And it's a little. It is a little damp there, there's a. A mystery of a clay layer. I believe that it's from when they dug the pond, they brought all the material up, spread it out, leveled it. Yeah, so it traps the water a little bit. Uh, plus it leads out of the hill, you know, the graves, it's downhill from the neighborhood in Skinner though. No lighting, no, nothing, and we're actually taking the existing lighting down.
Yeah, 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 the driver, yeah, so this is all the song and all new paved road.
It's gonna be gravel, a very different gravel, and then the um. The top spots where the, right up against the place gate will probably be. Flat up also, first one's saying, yeah, for vans, and the rest will be all gravel parking lot. So it's nice, you drive right up there. Yeah. And then the sidewalk connects it, sidewalk connect the pavilion.
Is this gonna be handicap only in parking up up here near the place gate or?
Uh, it'll, the front couple spots will be. It'll all, it's all gonna be dead flat anyways. So. Speaking with somebody with a wheelchair, even gravel, you know, tightly compactly gravel, that's what we'll have. Will be uh. Easy enough. And with sidewalk will be availability to the. Handicap spots we have down.
The main parking.
The main parking unit. And that's all millions. It's only. It's only M Site just as you come around the corner.
And then place gate area is going to be rubberized mulch or?
Some of it's gonna be rubber, we're, we're using all three. All three, there'll be some mulch. There'll be a ported plate surface and then there'll be like a rubber. Type surface.
So this doesn't, this doesn't look like much, but we did the playground for the brother school, this stuff was very, very expensive.
Yes, well, that's why, you know, we would love to use the, the ported plates, which is all no maintenance, it's, you know, but it's. It's a lot.
We got priced for that, it was like, oh my god.
And some of the areas, some of the. Playground equipment, you know, the kids are gonna wanna have the mulch there, but you know. And where Melissa's plan is to do a storyboard all around the whole outside, that's why the sidewalk connects it, so then. There'll be highlighted stories in there and they'll be able to go around it.
What about seating areas, I can see.
There's some park benches there, yeah. The. Seating right now is minimal, our, our goal is to get the playground in. You know, financially, and then that's all stuff we can add later.
How close is the playground area to the neighbors?
Oh, it's in the middle of the field, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, we're basically going in the infield of baseball, the baseball field that was up there. So.
So the, the men's softball division is dead.
Yes, yes.
Are there any other fields up there?
We have two soccer fields. Up on the other side, on the other side of the, beginning of the. What are they, the? Uh, being instead, yeah, bench.
We had a hearing on something else entirely. And. Mike Sepatelli. Was, I'll say. Bothered by noise of park.
We did remove a.
Tree.
Trees. But basically, the, the park had a, a border of about. Uh, it was about fifteen feet wide. The long, the whole border of seventy-five to eighty foot high trees that basically outlived their life and. They were a maintenance. Right, and they were, they were causing property damage to neighbors, so. Uh, the director decided that, you know, they've outlived their life and stake them down and. Start over, start over.
Okay.
All these, all these plantings you're rendering, that's just for effective, are you actually putting in all the dark wood and that stuff or?
Though, right now, the specification shows we're putting seven trees in. Um, the grant actually does not pay for. Uh, any landscaping, so. There are seven and, and they're more, uh, I believe they're, they're called out to be like oak trees, the purpose of the trees are to be shade trees, not.
Not ornamental.
Not ornamental at all.
They cheat one-on-one shows.
Yeah.
Bunch of trees. They're part of the plan or?
Or is that existing?
Or is this? Well, this, stop that time.
I don't. That is a. That is an elevation plan that.
This point here should support.
Yeah. I'm not, I don't even know where this plan came from.
Um, drawing his labels and existing conditions, are they actually there?
Oh, yeah, yep, these are there, yeah. Yeah, those are, those are the existing.
So there are trees already planted.
No, we didn't plant these, Mr. Sepatelli to plant.
Oh.
Yeah, that's right, he's right here, hit it back that way, that's right, yeah, that's right, he's planted all the, that's there, yeah.
I always ask. Yeah, because. Yeah. Okay.
Well, it's good, the kids got a. Playground, they're gonna have a. You know, water park.
That's, that's a park, that's a little park. Additional terms and conditions are.
I do have stuff I'm on there. In a draft motion. Did we get?
And all the other departments do your comments, yes, we heard.
Engineering, the fire marshal, the building official, and the WBA.
Okay.
So, and so the one condition that I did add was to adhere to the. Changes to drainage and potential change, changes to VNS controls advised by town engineer. In his memory.
Have you seen that?
Yeah. Yeah, my desk is across from him.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. You had seen.
It's gonna take it out of field, it's not an old apartment.
Or about to get a lot more use of it that way. Yeah, yeah, but yeah, the softball field actually has not been used in quite a few years now. And the fence was starting to get a little shabby and. Well, I think we're down to maybe four lights out of all the lights that are on the poles that work.
Wire gonna remain, are you gonna?
We've already, we've already cut the wire, we're going to get the fixtures off the poles and then pull the holes up. It'd be DPW's been doing most of that groundwork.
Think it'll be operational for this season?
Uh, yeah, those are the order, those.
That's the timeline.
I don't wanna say orders, uh, but we're, yeah, that, our, our goal. Our goal was. June first, but now we're shooting for uh, July, you know, for July fourth weekend. We already have the playground equipment minus the one. Dragonfly looking, that's ordered. Uh, all the playground equipment is at the VPW ready for us, I'll put it up there. Um, it's the weather, the weather and, you know, obviously a contractor to start and do the servicing and. We're simultaneously, which I think will be in front of you next meeting. With our soccer field bikes, we're working with the same engineering company to. Draft all that. But.
Anything else here? Okay. Nobody's got anything else, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Okay, um, this is just, um. New business, it's not a public hearing, so we'll go straight to a verbal.
Correct.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve application PNC twenty twenty-three dash five. Site plan modification for twenty-seven reservoir avenue, town of East Windsor playground construction. Um, with. Comments in and conditions. In the memo from Ruth Ann Calabrese. To the commission dated. February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, there's five general. And comments. And. Thirteen conditions.
Motion for approval, we are second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favors, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you both. Oh, yeah.
Signing agenda, nothing under. Yeah, we're going into other business, the uh. Work live ride presentation.
Uh, hi there, uh, my name is Sydney, I am here with uh, D-Segrate C T to present on our work, live, ride legislation. Give me a moment to figure out how to share my screen.
I just made you co-host my thing a couple seconds for it.
Uh, can you see that?
Yep, we can see it.
All right, great. Sorry about that. Having some technical difficulties. All right, can you see that?
Yes.
Great, uh, thank you guys so much for having me here, uh, like I said, my name is Sydney, I am here with D-Segrate C T. And the trans-oriented communities organizer. Uh, and I'm here to talk about our work, live, ride, um, state level legislation and the impact that will have on different P and Z's such as yours. So, we did, do Segrate C, C T to give a little bit of an overview, are a pro homes coalition. Of neighbors and nonprofits, uh, we have about eighty different nonprofits in our organization from around the state. And we really believe in creating abundant and diverse homes at communities in order to solve our housing crisis in the state. And to ensure that everyone has affordable and accessible homes to live in. Uh, our goal is also to promote economic prosperity, social inclusivity and environmental sustainability in the future of our state. We really take an all of above approach to um. Our, the work that we do, so we try to build more kinds of homes. Act than all levels of government, such as at the state and the local level with P and Z's. Uh, and work in and with diverse coalitions in order to um, create our policy and create more homes in our state. So our legislation is really focused on transit oriented communities, uh, which center riders and pedestrians. Offer a diversity of homes and jobs and allow for exciting and sustainable places to live. Uh, this is a little bit less relevant to East Windsor specifically, but uh, our legislation is focused a lot. On creating new transit oriented communities within our state. So New England itself historically has been very transit oriented, we have a deep history of. Uh, bus services, uh, trolleys and all sorts of really um. Done some diverse housing around train stations. Uh, this hasn't been the case for the last few decades, but there is this deep history that we are excited to get back to. With our legislation. Connecticut is a very transit rich state with a hundred eleven towns and cities served by local buses, rapid bus or trains. That includes about forty million annual rail rides before COVID, the numbers are a bit different now, but they've, they're about seventy percent, I believe, of what they were. And we have over forty-two million annual bus rides with current numbers of bus riders. Actually being more than they were uh, before COVID. So we did have some legislation last legislative session that you may have heard about, uh, we've learned some lessons from that. Um. What we've really learned is that mandates for towns are unpopular, uh, and our previous legislation kind of was one size fits all. Uh, we're, this year, we're really making sure that our legislation is based on what individual towns need and want. Um, we're also including buses in our legislation this year, which we did not have in the past, and that kind of left out. A lot of towns around the state, particularly in areas such as northern parts of the state where there's not very much train uh, service. Uh, we also learned that local capacity and infrastructure issues are a major barrier to building additional housing, denser housing or um. And uh, allowing for more housing around transit. And we think that, we also learned that local planning commissions need to be partners. In our legislation and in the work in order to make sure the state does create more housing. So we have a new plan for twenty twenty-three. Uh, and this is our work, live, ride legislation. Hold on, I can't see my screen very much, um, so, under work, live, ride, we are trying to create a more prosperous, equitable and sustainable state. That has enough housing for everyone who needs and wants it. Uh, it is a policy framework that is meant to align local and state planning goals and allow the uh, local level. And P and Z's to work closely with the state in order to. Create housing in transit oriented communities, uh, and it's really a call to action to be the change that you want to see in your own community. So this framework for work with pride is really about local opt-in, so a town or city's planning zoning commission. Ops in uh, and commits to creating a transit oriented community district along a rail or bus route. Or in the cases of um. In the case of town. towns that don't have uh, those areas, it can be along a state corridor or in just a major area of the town. Uh, it also create, um, it also allows for estate assistance and funding, so the Office of Responsible Growth, which currently exists but is not. Overly effective, uh, is designed to partner with planning and zoning commissions. And direct, direct discretionary state funding for things such as planning and design, infrastructure improvements. And. Uh, home creation within the transit oriented communities district. Or within the district in towns that don't have bus routes. So there is um, really three phases of this legislation that um, the Office of Responsible Growth will partner with. Towns in order to design and implement transit oriented communities. So the first step is uh, planning and design, which assists with um. Identifying the location and size of the transit oriented district. Um, fund necessary. Funding necessary site studies and planning and approving TOC districts uh, for further funding and support. They also will assist with infrastructure improvements such as uh, identifying necessary infrastructure. Improvements, uh, coordinating and expaying existing state discretionary funding for related projects and offering additional funding for specific projects that towns might ordinarily not have had access to. Uh, it also assists with home creation, such as in identifying the potential projects for affordable housing. Uh, coordinating and expediting existing state discretionary funds, uh, with, working with developers and uh, offering additional funding for projects. That are targeted based on affordability levels uh, for individual towns. So there's a hundred sixty-three towns and cities that fall into the tiers of our legislation. Such as uh, rapid transit communities, which are those with uh, rail or rapid bus stations. Transit communities, which have at least one local bus route or station, and then transit adjacent communities, which are towns that uh, border. Rapid transit or transit communities. So transit, uh, the TOC districts are also based on the service and population level. So for a town such as East Windsor, which is a transit adjacent community, uh, and one of fifty-two like it. Uh, the requirements would be uh, density of ten homes per acres on an area of about twenty-five acres. Um, near a village center, commercial corridor, or state road, uh, to stay a major place in the town. So, as I said, East Windsor is a transit adjacent community, which would require just a zoning density of ten homes per acre within this particular district. Um, they're often around a half mile radius, but there, that was really dependent in this legislation on. Uh, what the individual town wants and needs and will work with the state to create. So East Windsor's planning and zoning commission would be able to determine both the location and the size of a transit oriented communities district. And the Office of Responsible Growth will provide assistance on planning and identifying uh, funding sources that are for necessary infrastructure improvements. Uh, so all of the transit oriented communities districts um, must share the following criteria under our legislation. They must be of a reasonable size, which is uh, designated both by the Office of Responsible Growth, working with and the planning and zoning commission. Uh, and ideally near a transit station. Uh, although that doesn't qualify for, or that doesn't matter for um, towns that do not have. Public transportation. Uh, it must include as of right development of mixed use and mixed income housing developments. Uh, it also must include affordability levels based on state housing needs assessment. That is, I believe, for uh, developments that are over ten uh, units. And does not apply to all of, all of the buildings uh, for potential housing. Uh, it cannot include parking requirements, lot size minimums or residence, uh, residency restrictions. So there's a schedule for affordable housing requirements as designated by the state. Um. And we have decided that um. Areas with uh, certain levels of opportunity and market would be required a particular amount of de-districted, restricted. Affordable housing within their transit oriented districts. Um, so this would be. Uh, dependent on. How East Windsor is designated, I believe it has. A high opportunity level, but I don't recall it off the top of my head. Um, so that percentage of required affordable housing could be anywhere from about ten to twenty percent. Uh, if communities don't opt in, they are ineligible for certain discretionary state funding that is tied to infrastructure. It's a handful of grants, they're not. The most major ones and towns are still able to get by without it, but it does have some impact on uh. On the town, so if a town, uh, and additionally, if a town opts in but does not create a transit. District, then they must reimburse any planning funding received and are ineligible for the program. The town or city cannot retroactively reduce density in one of these districts without facing penalties. So the discretionary funds uh, that we are talking about here are brownfields mediation grants, such as planning grants, municipal grant programs. Uh, and targeted loans, as well as revitalization grants such as steep and urban, uh, urban communities challenges and uh, transit oriented development grants. Uh, such as the TOD fund. We also have plans with this legislation to expand the Office of Responsible Growth. By funding uh, for full-time land use planners at the state level. Uh, and this will provide additional funding for existing Office of Responsible Growth programs uh, for transit oriented districts. And serve as really a top-up fund. The statutory authority to determine the town, city, TOC district. Compliance is then the Office of Responsible Growth, and they also have the authority to coordinate other state agencies providing these discretionary funds. Uh, they would also establish TOC district guidelines and would provide public resources and data on planning best practices or to make things as easy as possible for town planning and zoning commissions. And that is all I have, if you guys have any questions.
Then.
Um. I guess I'm a little bit confused in how. Um, this, we went through something very similar. I believe it was funded by the state and worked on a plan for Warehouse Point, which is our area closest to. Um, transit. And the only transit available in town. And for anything to happen there, a developer has to come forward and want to. Either retrofit what is and buy up lots. Either retrofit what is and buy up lots and build something. And so far, there's really been no interest. Are you indicating the state would put money into something to make a developer come forward?
That is a good question. Um.
I I just don't see how this is that different than the plan we already have on the table and how this is going to further the plan.
Uh I am not certain off the top of my head. I think that the state would uh really incentivize. Developers, but I'm not certain. Uh we can probably get back to you on that.
They would need to put a lot of money on the table.
Yeah, that's uh definitely something.
Funding issues of the Blue Ditch. I mean, there's issues.
Right.
The state funded the study, but the state didn't offer anything toward making it happen.
Right. Um that, yeah, that's definitely uh something that I can discuss and uh get back to you on.
Yeah, I I'm just trying to understand how this moves the ball further for us.
Well, so for this. Um this is establishing basically minimum obligations, which would be contained within the zoning regs. So based upon.
On our zoning regs.
Right, and so this may be not a big deal for East Windsor, but this is a state, this is a bill that's gonna be adopted statewide. And so it's this idea of creating consistency between the densities, uses. And the way the development is handled in proximity to transit stops. Across Connecticut.
Yeah.
So are towns that are extremely unhappy with anything beyond single family? This is.
I see, but for us, I just don't understand how it helps us. And I see a risk in what it's proposing that. If we didn't do exactly what's proposed here. And we continued with our plan, um does that mean the brownfields funding that could help clean up? Broadbrook would be denied. Which is a whole other area of town.
I don't know that what.
It seemed to me that grants that were given would be taken back is this proposal.
I don't know that what you guys have or are looking to do would be in conflict with this.
Yeah, but this is just one more.
Right, this does like.
We would have to do a.
Yeah.
Do we have ten?
It's not gonna give you an edge necessarily, because it's not creating, it's not creating more market demand. But it's again creating a consistency.
Oh, I feel like it's adding another piece of potential bureaucracy to what we've already done. And threatening to take Brownfield money, if there is any, away from Broadbrook. So I see it as. Not necessarily friendly to what the town has tried to do.
Do you already have the brownfield funding?
I couldn't be telling you.
Not currently, no. No, there's no, we don't have any brownfield funds that we receive.
So so like, what are they asking from us? They're asking us to opt in on this, and you get free grant money.
And then designated.
And designate an area and then give us a free bus line, pretty much.
Well, I.
Well, I'm not sure you get a bus line, because people would walk to the train station. He wouldn't find a bus line to the train.
And that was one of the things that we had talked about um when um Ruth and I met with some other folks who segregate. With Jay and others is that there's a lot of this stuff that doesn't really pertain to East Windsor, just because a lot of the. A lot of the stuff in the proposal, we've done proactively already.
Right.
And some of the other stuff, we're not yet recipients of, we don't have.
But we can't have this because you didn't do it our way.
Well, I think that that the way as proposed here is largely the same as what we're already doing.
But do we have now go prove that what we're doing is consistent with this legislation?
So.
Remains to be seen, yeah.
To some or new planners at O P M.
So Sydney, I have a question for you. As the slide deck laid out. And so you have a slide that says. If you don't opt in, you're not eligible for discretionary funding, and then you have a slide that says discretionary funding exactly. And all these um. Grant opportunities that the town currently would have eligibility for. Would, if you don't opt in.
Yeah.
You can't have.
Can't have.
Yeah.
So like everybody's money for Park Hill or for some other part of town.
Uh yeah. Yes, however, there's only, I believe, fourteen grads that uh would apply there. And some of them are specifically designed for trans or did development. So the town is still able to access. A lot of grant funding from other sources uh and from other grants. Uh and I believe if you've already done this work to some extent, you can show that to the state and still. Be eligible to uh have some of these sorts of brownfields grants if you've already done a lot of similar work.
But somebody has to do the review to accept the plan we already did for the state.
Yes, and I believe that would be done by the new planners at the state level.
I guess I'm not clear on the value added to East Windsor.
Um yeah, this. Good question. There may be, I would imagine that if if East Windsor were making a case that a lot of the work had already been done. And if we supported your trial, that we would want crowd that they. Not already had for that. Um these O P M, I guess they'd be sort of a level beyond that, but.
Yeah.
You think that, you know, particularly for like a lot of the studies that you're talking about. Well, so your warehouse point study came from. D E C D.
Right.
I think it was D E C D. Route five corridor was Crow. But either way, I think that if there was any type of demonstration of, you know, we've already done certain things, Crow reviews all of the. Legislative decisions.
Do, I'll say. Check box, we have to go back through on all the work we've already done. And I feel like you might, you've done it now, it's almost being penalized to go back and. Prove that you've done it satisfactorily.
I think it would be more of an evaluative thing. I don't, I don't know that there's gonna be a huge process that towns will have to go through to demonstrate it. Either have it on the books or you don't. And this is all based upon what's proposed. This is. I guess they just got a bill number, right? You guys just got a bill number, Sydney, in the last week.
Yeah, I think so. This isn't finalized legislation as well. We're also having these discussions so that we. Uh can get feedback and figure out what things need to be adjusted.
Yeah, so there's, there's gonna be obviously significant changes to the language.
I just hate to see them adopt the checklist and say you missed one item. Now you're ineligible for funding.
Uh question, Sydney. Since we're transit adjacent, did I hear you say that? The proposed area should be within a half a mile of the of the nearest transit station?
Uh honestly, I'm not as familiar with how the legislation uh pertains to transit adjacent communities. Uh I don't think that's been laid out as much, but um. Basically, it would be, I think, about an area of around a half mile radius, wherever in the town you would like to put it. Uh and wherever you guys in discussion with the state decide would be the best for East Windsor. Um and basically, we just have a density of uh ten units per acre.
Okay, because I mean, if we're talking about the Windsor Locks train station, and it's on the other side of the river. We may not have very many, if any, land that's within a half mile radius of that location.
Right, and because the transition is in Windsor Locks, I don't think that would necessarily apply to you. So you. What would apply to East Windsor specifically are the guidelines for transit adjacent communities, which are a lot less. Uh the density is less. It. Uh doesn't have to be around transit specifically for communities that don't have transit. So Windsor Locks, having the train station would have more requirements under this legislation, and East Windsor would not have those requirements.
So we can designate pretty much anywhere in town where this high density area could be?
I believe so, yeah. Basically, in transit adjacent communities, it is designed to create things that are basically walkable downtown type areas.
You could designate Warehouse Point if you thought that was the place that density was most acceptable. Or. Not that, well, you're, well. Yeah, Northern Water Street maybe. Oh, well, doesn't have to be a single parcel.
No, but the total buildable land.
Well, it doesn't have to be raw then. Somebody could aggregate properties.
Yeah, that's by getting a developer and do that.
Allow someone to put up, put up, let's put something up in front of the Geister's Plaza right along the road. There's a. A lot that could be done um. And density, depending on what.
The developer, isn't that?
Right.
Today.
You could allow the density to be a thousand units an acre if the numbers don't work, you will see nothing.
Right.
Yeah, so this.
And if you don't deal with the other things.
Anyone else have anything?
No.
Okay, Sydney, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Do you want to? Just discuss the connectivity at all, or do you want to do that?
Len is here. Are there any folks here to join the workshop on the Broadbrook sidewalk?
I am, Noreen.
Hi, Noreen.
Hi.
Okay, so um. In twenty nineteen, we received funding for a grant that we applied for. Um for the construction of in connectivity project, which was new sidewalks. Uh connecting to existing sidewalk in the Broadbrook Village area. These um. Plans here, but projects are for sidewalk installation are old Ellington Road, Windsorville Road. Ry Street, Redmore Ave and Depot. Uh and I said it already, I apologize, two and a half mile loop. And um there are some. Images.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it comes down Main Street, the old Ellington, down Reservoir, up Perry Lane. And down D Phil back to me. And there's also um.
Wonder which side of reservoir.
Work, uh well, depends. Or or.
Nine.
Eight, one on the other side.
I know they trimmed a bunch of trees.
Yeah, that's where we're going, right down the tree line, down, cross, and then when we get to the dog park, then we're crossing over. And then we're gonna be on your side of the reservoir.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, Joseph.
Yep.
Okay, you're here. So we're coming down. Initially, we were coming down that side of the road. And.
You know, the Keenan's property is.
That is gonna be very much of a challenge. That would have been a very expensive. So we chose to. We chose to come up Windsorville. We chose to come up Windsorville, put a crosswalk in, cross reservoir. And then come down on the south side of reservoir, uh because we own property here. And, you know, we can. We can grade whatever we have to. We're not gonna bother anybody. Over here, you can see we've got some grading. Have to complete, so we're trying, I mean, there's areas where we're gonna be in front of people's houses. For surprise.
I mean, it's nice that there aren't gonna be sidewalks, because we, my wife walked around there quite a bit, but uh.
Technically, beyond your property, you can just be.
When a sidewalk goes along somebody's property, they have to shove away and maintain it.
Well, that, just to maintain it from a shoveling standpoint. No, 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 we're, we're responsible for any trip has, you know, if it eaves or what have you or breaks off.
Is it grass sidewalk island road?
It, well, it depends. Some areas.
Excuse me. And Lynn, 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 Mike, this is beg. Could you have the gentleman identify himself? I'm, I apologize. The gentleman you're talking to?
Me?
Yes.
Joe LaJoy, nine reservoir avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, generally, you have a little bit of a lawn area. You'll have the sidewalk and then whatever's behind it, your lawn or or what have you. I mean, there are some areas here where the sidewalk's gonna be right next to the road. And we're gonna, you know, create a, a concrete curb with the sidewalk block, you know, but. It, it's all a matter of grading. Uh I did have one individual come to my office and. We may have to do a little drainage or something in his front yard, because he's got a little pond issue. So we don't, we're not, we're not trying to. You know, create any problems for anybody that they don't currently have, and if we can fix something more here, we can do that, but.
He said it's kind of like stop at the dog park and then cut across.
Yes, would you, yes, it's uh. Right by the uh. This, see this right here, this, this is the entrance to the dog park parking lot here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're going to come down along here, then we're gonna have a crosswalk, and then we'll come down in front of the park.
That's gonna run right along.
While we don't appear.
Okay, so that'll give people the ability to walk to the new playground. Nice, nice. Nice. That's good.
Prices have increased a bit since twenty seventeen, when we first applied for this. As you might imagine, the bonuses too is we're connecting Park Hill. But people will be able to come. Here we already have sidewalks already, so that's good. That's gonna be a challenge once it goes.
Oh, yeah.
Adding it, there's some there. We have a brand new sidewalk, as you may recall, coming up from the center of town, because we had a little wall problem there along the pond. So that's a brand new sidewalk. It comes up, comes up to Merlot. Um Merlot put a brand new sidewalk in when they, when they updated everything. However, in, in their. Easternly driveway, where people have been driving over it. It's all broken up, so we're gonna fix that as we come through. And then as you head farther east on Depot Street. There's a bit of uh fumy, crappy, broken. The humanist sidewalk that we're just gonna take out and and put in new concrete sidewalks, similar to what we did down in uh. Warehouse Point on Main Street.
Are there any other sections of this one we're gonna be crossing the street back and forth, or is it just pretty much just reservoir?
Yeah, well, the only other thing, we, we, we have to cross Depot Street.
That's also a stop sign there too.
Yeah.
That helps.
Isn't Ry Street already has, like the school sidewalk?
Not all the way.
So at the crossover reservoir, is it gonna be any kind of a crossing symbol or anything?
Oh, it'll be crosswalk. It'll be.
Not electronic, but you know, kind of push a button to activate it. Uh I've seen the other places. Yeah, that activates.
Well, the. The state has put up some actually crosswalk signs that actually have just, you don't push a button, it just constantly.
The only tough part is that's, that's kind of a blind spot when you're going down that hill, kind of like where that crosswalk will be, isn't it?
No, actually, we moved the crosswalk, so it was a good sight. Sight distance. We were gonna, we were looking at areas to cross, and you wanted to cross before we got to this. But it's, it's not a good area, so we waited until we got up, and we had a good sight line in both directions. Yeah, it's a, it's about, it's about seventy-five feet shy of the park entrance, and almost literally. Where the dog park entrance is, that's where it's crossing, so it's nice in a nice flat area. To answer your question, is the sidewalks.
To answer your question, is the sidewalks, we have current, we currently have sidewalks up to Mill Pond. So it'll be all new from uh uh Mill Pond up.
To Perry.
To Perry, yeah.
Actually.
Well, there's a.
That'll be brand new.
Yeah.
The from Mill Pond West is the crappy.
Will be all replaced. What do you do with the railroad crossing?
Nothing, nothing, we're just gonna.
That. That's where you play for.
I I actually, I, let me see, we have a.
No, it just, it comes off it uh.
Well, it's a good thing those houses, we put on all knowing to be able to put sidewalks and when they came in, now there'll be all the little split out in the triangle.
Basically.
We're just gonna have a.
The development that's going into. You made that. And we would have been able to connect all the.
Real.
Is there uh anyone online that has any questions or comments about the sidewalk plan?
Yeah, Noreen Farmer, two forty seven Southwater Street. I have a couple of questions, um. How much is the grant for?
Three.
Seventy nine.
Seventy seven hundred. I have it right here inside my folder.
Three thirty.
Three thirty four four.
Okay, and then I looked up the grant um specifications, and what I saw was that the grant money can only be used for construction. It cannot be used for relocating utilities, if utility poles need to get relocated, that's on the town or the utility company. Um, it talks about um, if you need to get any right of ways, if you need to compensate homeowners, all of that is not part of the grant, it's solely construction. How much is this going to cost the town, and is there a match that we have to accommodate? Is it a matching?
There is not a match. There is not a match, but it's gonna cost the town money because the, we actually applied for this in like twenty seventeen. So the cost of everything has gone up appreciably since then.
Okay, so do we know how much the town is gonna have to spend?
Out of our sidewalk fund.
How much? A hundred?
It could cost us a hundred thousand dollars out of our sidewalk fund.
Okay, and then as far.
We we don't know till we put it out to bid, that's, you know, we're estimating this.
So um relative to moving utilities, like utility poles, I know on Perry Lane, they have nice streetlights, um. I don't think they're necessarily telephone poles, but they have very nice streetlights, so if those need to be moved, is that gonna be the town? The town and then the utility poles along the other streets, are we paying for that? Are we gonna go to the utilities?
The the utility companies have to move their utilities at their expense.
Okay.
And and they will do that for for the town, they've we've had them move poles for us when we widened the road a little bit and such. Um, they 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 take a while to do it, but.
Okay. Um, and then.
You were talking about Perry Lane though, Noreen, Perry Lane, we're not, there's existing sidewalks on Perry Lane, we're not going down Perry Lane.
Oh, you're not, okay, um. So on this two point, two and a half mile loop, how much of it is town owned property that we have to arrange for the cleaning of the snow, the sanding, the salting, all of that?
I I don't have that number off the top of my head.
But, you know, if.
The only, really, the only town property that I can think of, well, I should, it it it's all on reservoir pretty much, it's coming down the hill from from Windsorville um down past Dog Park, and then when we cross by the Dog Park, it's in front of the town park. And then it's in front of people's yards, so that's basically the uh the stretch that would be town uh would have to maintain.
Okay, so all of the residents on these streets where the sidewalks are gonna be there, they are responsible for removing the snow and ice, um. Do these, does the residents know? This, like that they're gonna have a sidewalk put in and that they're gonna have this extra stuff they have to do? And and I'm not, I'm, I'm a big proponent of sidewalks, although my personal opinion on sidewalks is there should always be opposing sidewalks to avoid people crossing and crosswalks and cars not stopping and hitting them, um, so if you're walking east to west and back the other way, it's, you should have a sidewalk on the other side, but um, I'm not opposed to it, it's just, this has been hanging around since twenty nineteen. The costs have gone up. Um, I don't, I tried to find anything about this as to if there was a public hearing, if there was anything, and I'm not finding anything, um. So I'm a little concerned about what it's gonna cost the town. Where's that budgeted? And do the residents know?
Well, this is actually the public information meeting, Noreen.
Okay.
Um, I was actually quite surprised. This is uh, this was uh, this was uh, applied for, develop, whatever you wanna call it, by about four town planners ago.
You gotta, like, you gotta switch in there.
Who, on the computer.
I did.
Who uh who thought this would be a good idea and applied for the grant, then left. So uh, and then we've had several different town planners and it became my, sort of my project by default. And I was quite surprised, as I think Ruth was, when we went through the files and realized that the state actually gave us the money without any public information meeting before then. However, this is the public information meeting, it was advertised.
Every homeowner that is impacted with a sidewalk in the.
Yeah.
Better notice.
So every, every, Ruth just said every homeowner that's impacted got a notice in the mail.
Thanks.
So and we have one here. And I've had, I've had one couple come into my office, and Ruth has had some come into her office, so I mean.
Yeah, and and hopefully they know, my concern is always, it's it's more along the lines of we get these things, nobody knows about it, and we start to do it, and then all heck breaks loose because people are, what are you doing? What, you know, um, and that's not your fault, Lynn, and it's not the planning and zoning's fault, it's that people just are kind of oblivious to life, um. And my other concern is that, yeah, in twenty nineteen, it might have been three thirty four, it's probably at least a hundred thousand dollars more now, just with the price of things, and um. Um, and again, I'm looking at it, I'm thinking, you know, you guys, you and Joe are gonna have to get guys out there on a day like today cleaning sidewalks, you know, is that another body that we possibly need? And again, I'm a big proponent of sidewalks, but I think they need to be in places where there's a lot of foot traffic. I'm not sure what the foot traffic is. And I, you know, I could have maybe found any of that out if there had been any other kind of public anything, so um. That's, th- those are just some of my concerns on it, and again, um, I know there's not a tremendous amount of money in our sidewalk fund. Um, so if we don't have enough money in the sidewalk fund, and we gotta come up with another two hundred thousand dollars, it has to go to a town meeting and it gets voted down, because people you know, over on my side of town, I live in Warehouse Point, don't wanna put sidewalks out there, where are we? What, you know, um. And um that's mostly what I was concerned about. And I I don't want us to turn back money that somebody has given us, but I also don't wanna go into it.
I don't know, but we.
Not knowing exactly what we're getting hit with.
In our budget.
What?
The money in the world also comes and goes towards that.
Yeah, be more.
Okay.
Is there anything that needs to happen on our behalf?
No, it was really an informational meeting um to give folks a chance to um voice concerns and ask questions.
I would have accepted a few.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there are a lot of walkers in town, so there are people who will really enjoy it, yeah. I see a lot of people.
Is there, is that the master plan of, I mean, beyond this project, is there the next one in line and do?
Sidewalks.
For sidewalks, I mean, is there kind of a plan for that?
Not that I know of.
On the list.
Warehouse Point, uh Route Five Study has a bunch of sidewalk and street skate changes and stuff, so that's all like specked out and kind of, but there's not actual plans, but there is sketches for that and and whatnot, but other than that, no.
I like that idea of one by the river by private property, right?
Right.
On the Route Five study where they drew a.
Reservoir. Are responsible for it.
The big hurdle for this was getting by the pond, which you guys did already, just great, so it's literally sidewalk by the pond, that would have been brutal.
It's literally less than twenty minutes with the snowblower on the track.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have, we have sidewalk crew, guys.
In the schools.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're in the center of Broadbrook doing a lot of sidewalks uh today. You know, so, and in Warehouse Point.
Lynn, I have one more question. Is there a timeframe to which we need to spend this money? Is there a drop dead date?
Apparently not, since it's, we had since twenty nineteen or something.
Probably so flush with money right now.
Yeah, no, there was, they they haven't, I, I have been since it ended up in my lap, I've been getting, I've been sending in, I think, quarterly reports to the state, the DOT is actually managing the funding on this and overseeing the project. Um, and I've been back and forth with with the gentleman that's handling it, it's DOT, and I've sent him the uh a set of these plans um and told him that these were the plans that we were likely gonna use, but understanding that we were gonna have um this public information meeting tonight, I didn't know what was gonna come out of that. I put together a bid package and a contract that we're gonna be utilizing, it's about three quarters of an inch thick there. And uh he has that too, and he's, he's looking at it. Or his people are looking at it, so that if there's anything that they need tweaked, we can do it, it'd be nice to get this. My plan is to get this done finally, this this construction season.
Yep, okay.
And I, and I don't think we'll have a problem with that as long as the state doesn't have some great issue with something.
Did we say it early as July, it was the latest November?
Yeah, something like that.
And can I just make one other comment, really not got to do this, but I miss public participation, your SharePoint thing on the agenda's not working this time. You know, you can click on that and I can go see all your documents, it's saying the files are corrupted or something, just for your knowledge.
Come for a summer concert? I think you can swing on the swing.
Bring a little wagon.
Or you can sit in the splash pack.
Cooler wheels.
I don't know if you're familiar with Avery Street South, but the work they had to do on that street, the purpose sidewalks, and you had to knock down, I mean, wall there.
We don't have South Wondermont.
The upside here is we're gonna cut out some dead trees that have been there for a long time. Um, there are, there are some guide wires that have to be extended out, there are no utility poles that be moved, there is one house that has some props. Um, and then, you know, there's, there's a few trees here and there, like what up by the. Okay, so the next item that we're gonna discuss is a formal discussion on a text amendment for farmer innovation. Anybody wanna speak to this? Well, what do you think? I believe at this point, you should have in front of you. Oh, that's all right, I can just lay this on the table. So I believe you have in front of you now the the uh the language for text amendment, which we're proposing to the farm regulations, as well as the uh the comments by town staff and then our follow up. Of course, we've got all that. To try to put this in a kind, some context, I believe we're also providing a copy of the the plans that we're going to weapon commission. Um, which is specific to our site, which doesn't necessarily have their on your system for text amendment, but just to give context, we want and give you an idea that this is, this truly is a farming operation out here, this is the actually. The the site is located at the intersection of of Windsor Road and Chamberlain Road. A hundred acres, a hundred acres, a hundred acres there. And what we're looking to do is the yellow on this map is actually existing agricultural fields out here. There are wetlands um that are along here, but as you can see, there's some old, there's some topography, which was essentially left over from old mining activities out of the site. There's essentially, there's, there's an old pit face along the back that drops uh you know, about fourteen feet. And then there's, whatever, there's a hole depression up along the front, and then over here, there's a bunch of irregularities where it looks like somebody stocked piles of material at one point in time. So what we're proposing to do is is take and regrade these areas to to make them useful and free of crap land out of them, and this area up in here, we can gain eight acres. And and I, and eight acres is is very important to to work in this farming operation, because you can generate that much more feedstock um for the animals. So, you know, that's, this is the purpose, that's what we're looking to do out here, again, the the text amendment is trying to to uh to give some guidance, and so you can be for farmers in accordance with, you know, the the right farm laws that the town has adopted. Um, where it basically states the right farm law, and so, well, we're a farming community, and even if farming has some threat of nuisance associated with it, the benefits outweigh the costs. And therefore farming is, you know, something that that the town supports. Um, so I don't, if anybody has any questions on this, we can go on that later, but again, the really here for the the tax amendment and um, oh, the only other thing I will state about this is we could actually get some correspondence from D E P. Um and they have made the determination that their permits don't apply because this is a farming activity, as far as their stormwater um industrial permit, which would apply to a gravel permit, does not apply to this. So they've made that determination for us already. So that brings us back to the text and the post text in front of you. Um, again, our first run at this, based on our preliminary discussions with the town staff, was to put something in the farm regulations, just add another section that we could put in there. And with the caveat, it says if you comply with these standards in the farm regulations as a farmer, then you don't have to comply with the excavation permit standards. Um, that a gravel permit would would have to comply with it. And again, what we're doing is we're just regrading, regrading for to for crop land, it doesn't involve taking material offsite because we have no place to put it on site. So we are excavating a large amount, um, as you can see, we've got a twelve foot pit face we're getting rid of. So we're taking a fair amount of material out. Um, but again, it's all related to farming, and therefore uh we're hoping, we're hoping to get the some some relief from some of the requirements that that are in the actual uh excavation permit section, and put something in the farm. Excavation permit section and put something in the farm. It's, this gets difficult to kind of go between your actual site and the general al- generality of the. Text amendment. I'll try to just keep it. Which we understand, that's how the protection has to be treated. We gotta look at it as how it applies to any property. Which we understand, I mean, we tried to make, you know, things, we're looking at it as, as farmers in town. What can we do for them for whatever activity they had?
So. If I could just, um, uh, go ahead. Jump in for a second, so thinking about like just farmers in general, but with, with. Uh, improvements of farmland property in the town and not.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, Mike.
I'm, I'm sorry, Peg. I'm sorry, should have really hit the.
Nope, I'm, I'm just asking who you are, Herb Holden, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So behind that, it's like, so in our text, in our text amendment and regulations, it's like, you know. And, and I understand the town's concern about like everybody opening up. Uh, either gravel built, like gravel dump site or, you know, like a filling hole and or a exporting hole, right? And so that goes back to, you, you know, what do you guys? I guess envision as a gravel pit. And a gravel pit to me has. Sales, processing, it's a business, it's going to be open for. It's, it's open for the, the sole purpose of, you know, mining a property for profit. And, you know, if you're a farmer in town, you're not necessarily, and you're trying to grow nursery stock. You're trying to expand your property for more tobacco. For myself, I'm trying to increase it for livestock and corn operations. And if you go out to this, my particular property, you'll see like the great elevation and cut, if you will, but we're talking about in general. And, and the thing is that like, we don't want to be. Gravel pits, we don't want to be, you know, marketing our material to manafort and. Um, you know, and trying to sell gravel as a livelihood, we're just trying to improve our farmland. Or. The expansion of our farm business. And in order to do that. You know, some places may have to fill. And some places may have to export. Um, in order to, in order to achieve that, I was, uh, just commenting with Timmy, while we started the session here, it's just like, you know, I was going back over my. Over my notes and I was, you know, this past year, there's a farm in town who received over eight thousand tons of process. So they could build farm roads throughout their farm. Obviously, they didn't come here asking for a, you know, a, a permit, if you will, to do so, but just something that had happened. So when we're talking with that, I think that's legal to grow so much for yardage for. For years, well, some move and that's it, I think it's twenty thousand or forty thousand yards like that. Well, it's not their own, they, they imported.
We had, we had a discussion.
That's legal.
Currently. At bringing material in, taking material out.
Okay.
Beyond a certain number requires a permit now, sure, so if people did that, they didn't follow the process. They should have had to bring, get a permit to bring in that much material.
Because we don't know what that material is.
Right, but then, but I'm just saying, okay, so. And that goes back to your guys' zoning enforcement or, or whatever, whoever the person. I understand, but like. That, well, that's, that's the number is a hundred cubic yards. I don't, I don't know the number of twenty thousand yards.
I was throwing it out there, I'm saying, I'm saying what he did was. Illegal.
Right, so, but that, but that is, but the, okay, so we're, we're dealing with two issues, and I feel like when I'm, when I'm talking to you, especially at the last meeting. And, uh, Mr. Gowdy was like, well, how are we going to manage this? So we were talking about, we were offering a deed restriction. And Mr. Gowdy was like, well, how are we going to manage that? And I'm just like, well, you know, how the town. Does their zoning enforcement or their deed restriction enforcement versus like how we have regulations in the town, I try to follow regulations. Now, whether other people don't follow regulations, I don't feel should be like part of the decision making as to whether or not. We have a regulation that, that makes sense for the town. And so, and that's what I was getting at, is like, this farmer needed to build access roads in their farm. Didn't ask for permission, they didn't go through that process, they should have, that, and that was kind of like half of my point. But at the same time, you know, like. When we gave our text amendment, uh, or, you know, our idea of the text amendment, the idea of the text amendment was, okay, we'll let you. The response was, we'll let you do fiber yards. And that's, again, that's not commercial agriculture. And I'm trying to like, what's up?
I guess the question. We're grappling with. Is when you talk about removing material from the premise or importing material from the premise. That's where the pain comes. Can you do something with? Contouring the land? Without the material coming and go.
Good point, that's, that's.
You said you had a hole, you had a. The pain comes with the trucks coming and going with the.
At free will.
Yeah, and the dust and all that, at least if you do it within your property.
Yeah. With wetlands, there, there's, there's no place to get rid of it.
Well, as always, you can.
Well, keep it on site and create a, create a. Well.
But it's the truck traffic in and out, that, I mean, that's where all the complaints are going to come from.
Oh, and the enforcement side of it didn't say, okay, how, how many cubic yards is.
And will six inches be adequate? Cover. For cropping.
I'd like to speak to those two particular things in particular, because. First of all, when you, when you go into an area that's wooden. And you take down trees. And whether it's a gravel operation or a farming operation, chances are you're not going to have six inches of topsoil to put back on the ground. So it. I think the six inches of topsoil. Of minimum requirement to reestablish on the ground. Is, it's, in most cases, it's probably going to require that you import more material just to bring in topsoil. And on a farm like this, what a farmer's going to do is he's going to amend the soil, he's going to make. You know, he's going to use what's there.
And six inches of topsoil will be even enough to plow for like corn, you're plowing, doesn't it? Dig in much deeper than six inches.
Well, and that ain't part of the process that that creates the power soil.
Right.
That with the amendments and the plowing, eventually you're going to end up with your twelve inch plow there. Well, it takes time. It takes time, it's not going to happen right away. But then, you know, so the crop, the quicker you can add amendments, the better off the crops will be.
But if you're deforesting an area, you're not going to have twelve inches of topsoil there.
Right.
You're, you're, and like Tim said, you're probably not even going to have six inches of topsoil. So you're going to have to figure out how to amend the soil, right?
It's, this is all activity that still takes place on property. Yeah, so that's kind of what we're trying to get towards is, is there a way to achieve what you need or want and you can reclaiming more land? Without having to have outside activity, that everything stays on property. That you, that you amend the soil, that you move it, you regrade it, you slope it, you terrace it, whatever you do. Because you don't necessarily have, you can grow on a slope, you can, sure, there are things you can do, that it doesn't have to be perfectly flat land. And still be able to farm it. So that's kind of the point we're trying to get to is if it's a possibility. To, to achieve the farmable land without having to have the truck traffic and the. And the, you know, removing of materials or bringing in the materials and that. It's, it's a much easier thing to. Yeah. You know, we could move dirt around, obviously, to fill the soil, the, the pile or fill the hole.
Right.
But we, we still have fourteen foot. Nearly vertical slopes that we're going to have to deal with.
Okay, and you make terrorists farming, uh, in part and a little part.
You're still going to have those slopes unless you can get rid of the material. There's going to be a slope somewhere, even if you take it from one point and put it up on another, it's somewhere you're going to have breaks, you're going to have.
Part to farm here and a part to farm here.
Yeah, but you don't get the eight acres. You don't maximize the use of, the use of the link.
I mean, if you look across the street from my neighbor, like, again, as we're talking about text amendment, and I'm thinking my, my property, but, you know, across the street. It's just a long rolling sloping field that they farm a hundred percent of. Unfortunately, on my property, it's, here's a field, here's a fourteen foot cut, here's another field, here's a wetland, here's an, and then, and then here's a field. Oh, and then here's a massive hill, which we're not even talking about the massive hill, but it just. This is, this is where the predicament that I have. Personally comes in, and we were just, like I said, looking at the, the, um. The farming regulations, which don't have a lot of. Definition behind them and trying to find a way to. Um, make it so that it would be advantageous for farmers in the community.
But if stuff comes and goes, it's excavation.
But that's, that's common with farming, stuff comes and goes from fields all the time. There, there are always harvesting trucks.
Well, what's the difference if it's dirt or tobacco? I mean, like, I don't. Or, 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 I'll, I'll be the first one to score inside of it, I, we blow corns, hilly, all over the roads all the time, I'm out there shoveling and sweeping the roads as best as I can. But I'm like, you know, but when we're harvesting corn in August or August, September, you know, those crops are, they make a mess, but. I'm out there sweeping the road as fast as I can, but, you know, guess what, I have, you know, we'll have, you know, a hundred and fifty trucks that, you know, that weekend that were.
But I think people feel like those trucks are farming when they see dirt and gravel moving. It's, people perceive it as mining.
We're going to have every, every gravel pit, it's like come under this regulation.
Right.
Well, which is the reason why we, we put in like a catchall as far as like having a deed restriction.
Right. That's, and we understand.
And no processing.
That, that's a concern, and that's why we put in that, that a deed restriction into the language to make sure that somebody's not going to just come in and. Try to bypass the other regulation. Well, I think, I think we're bringing brought up probably the best points is like, when we start talking about excavating, now we have to start looking at where the water table is. We need to see what the elevations are, what the final grade is going to be. Um, those types of issues where, under your proposal, just. Well, groundwater is another issue that for a farmer, your, your regulation for eight feet to groundwater. Is for a farmer, the closer to the groundwater you can get with that topsoil, the better off you're going to be. It's better for agriculture, it's better for the crop. They can't dig a cellar. For a while, well, there's another way that you're going to restrict that in the department.
I mean, that, that's kind of what we thought was like, so now you would have this property that, that was originally amended for agriculture. So let's say that person comes back to this, it would be coming right back to this commission that says, hey, I want to build a subdivision on this property. And you could say, well, you know, at that point, and this is right, the reason why we wanted the ten year restriction is like, so the, the commission. Could sit there and say, we approved this for agriculture, we think it's, it's best in agriculture, we're not going to do a subdivision, or. Maybe something else has changed in your community that you're like, you know what? We really want to, you know, see that this part of town starts seeing either houses or warehouses or whatever it is they want to do.
Do that, if somebody comes in and they meet the regs, then they have a right to do it. We can't just say.
How do you meet the reg of a subdivision?
Based on what are zones?
That would subdivision regs, we can't just say, we don't want it here. It's just, that's illegal, if they meet the regs, they need the regs.
One of the things that I'm, we've been batting this around, trying to wrap our heads around, how do we, how do we close the gap between where? At least our comments were and where you guys are. And trying to recognize the totality, as they said, about who may either say, why couldn't I have done this before? Or now I want to do this, trying to create a distinction. The challenge here i- in with any zoning issue is that. The potential future use of the property can't be factored into how the decision is made because we, they can't force. You could run through this whole thing, remove all this gravel and then say. We don't want to do farming. And so the ten year restriction is, is one thing, but. It's coming in under, this is what we're going to do, but it, it's not a mandate, the town can't mandate that used to happen. So there's that one piece, the other thing that I'm trying to understand is. Based upon the existing upper operational standards or requirements in the zoning regs now. I, I guess the issues that. My sort of thinking through are, one, or that we've talked about, or one, the requirements. To develop a plan, a legitimate bona fide tangible document. Two. Bonding. And three. My assumption is, third, which we haven't addressed, we talked about, is that there's a special permit that's required. Because, so I. The plan can't be as big of an issue for this operation, though we're not talking about this operation because the plan's there. Right, and so then, yeah, the five hundred cubic yards basically came from us talking, what do we think is the most reasonable way we can get this? To move without creating an operation that is really something else, none of us, I think, have any issue with where you all want to go. But we're sort of. At odds with how we get there. Um, I don't think any, everybody wants what you're trying to do to happen, and the, the business to be as. Every, ever since I met you, everywhere I go, Broadbrook Beef is on the menu.
Thank you.
And I'm like, great, and now I'm thinking about work, um, but no, I, I think it's just sort of the mechanism how we get there, but so. If the plan is an issue, but maybe not a huge issue because you have one. The bonding, and I don't really know what we've required for bonding, what the amounts are, how those have been provided, and if there's any flexibility in how that's done. Certainly. The statute provides that there are other ways to bond beyond just cash. Um, so is there some flexibility in that? And then third. What do, how big of a barrier is the special permit process? How, how big of a barrier do you see that to be?
Well, I think there's some other. Issues in the current earth and ex- earth excavation thing that also needs to be addressed, such as, uh, minimum setbacks. Right now, you have minimum setbacks in there, which a farmer can farm right up to his property. And. If you have to apply the hundred foot setback. Which is what's in the regulation. Then that's really restricting. Is, is best use of that link for, for agriculture. Um, you know, we want to fire, or in this particular case, we just want to go up to the road, start at the edge of the road, which you do have. The ability in here to, I guess, wave a front yard hundred foot buffer. But that, again, that's something that. What, for a farmer, we went to not verbiage that. That you can go within that hundred foot buffer if you meet the elevations of your budding property. So that, that, that whole idea is to allow for sloping and to allow a transition between properties. So if you're not talking about, you know, dropping your elevation to the point where you come up to the property line and now all of a sudden you created a cliff wall. Well.
How are the grades shown? Is there a lot of top hole, or is the way it finished grades going to create a situation when there's a lot of? Potential runoff off the property or grades sloping away from. Or towards property lines?
You didn't prepare a finish. This, yes, this is a finish grade. And, and, and actually, it's. We're not really changing the grade, right, right now, everything drained from the road down to the wetland. Essentially, we were matching that. We're going to be. Feeling this, what, here's the property line, and here's the other, but here's the street, and, and in ours case. We don't really have. An issue with. Our budding property because we're not going within a hundred feet of anything, but we are going right up to the street. Because you don't want to have, otherwise we wouldn't be able to fill this hole, that would, we wouldn't be able to take down some of those miles, so we really.
But you're going to meet, you're going to basically blend to the grade of the.
True, yeah, so I mean, we're not, again, I didn't fit all properties, saying that, you know, you can. Go within that hundred foot buffer as long as you're meeting grades on the others.
Right.
Right, which would require some type of language change. In, in your, in the regulation. Or just in the farming side of this. For the farming side, again, yeah, it's. Or do we deal with it as? Something in this section, I don't, because I mean, again, we're making this exception for farming, right?
So every other gravel pit operation is going to say, hey, these guys are going to run car blanch, they're hauling out as many trucks as they want, trying to back doors through the farm racks. Be pulling out, God knows how many trucks out of here. With no oversight. That's what they're all going to say.
And you know what your answer could be to that? Look at the farm ordinance. The farm ordinance that this town adopted. And you know what your answer could be to that? Look at the farm ordinance. The farm ordinance that this town adopted has a statement in it. It says, any nuisance associated with farming, which would be traffic, which would be noise, which would be dust, is acceptable because the benefit of farming outweighs the negative.
So I look at this as, well, maybe you're trying to haul all the good stuff. Bring it back to the yard, sell it, and then make your bathing. There's there's money here. Lot of money here. So of course, you'd wanna haul it up. We're not, we're not, we've done this before.
This is, we're ready to create farming. That's what we're doing.
It's significant excavation.
It is significant.
But it's also broken into phases, and we can break it into more phases if that makes the town more comfortable, and the town, and in in the phasing, we.
Again, we can, we're getting just that pure.
No, no, I I I understand that, but I'm saying for it, for the farm regulation, like, we have it broken into phases that are matching the ex- extraction. If you want it to be the your current regulations, if you want it to be in smaller, then make it in smaller. It has nothing to do with my plan. It's, we were just trying to stay consistent with what your other e- extraction is. And that's your control point. How many acres of the property are currently corn?
Uh, I had that.
You have that.
How many, how many, on a peak?
Right, in some. Well, you don't have the other field in there, and the other field's like none.
Just.
So there's sixty-five farmable acres, and there's thirty acres that are like the the larger, so again, sixty-five, and on the sixty-five, there's thirty.
I'm trying, I had the number once.
So we're approximately fifty percent is currently you currently, but you currently is, and this would get you.
A additional acre.
Yeah, yeah. So if if thirty acres is approximately currently in production now, that if this, if this operation as proposed takes s- six years, throughout that timeframe, what is, what is the amount of production, or how many acres will remain in productivity? Right? So what I'm trying to figure out is, is ninety percent of this gonna remain farmland while you're doing this? And you know, as you go to phase two, phase one will go, come back online, correct?
That's, that's, that is. It's only, only the area, only the active face. So the, that's why we'd split it in phases. We'd work on this phase. While this would remain a farm. Once this is done, this would be reverted back into farming, we worked on this phase. So it's.
Okay, I I thought it wasn't farmable at all.
These are already open fields, okay? The the yellow is open field, but what we're looking to do is, it'll have the white section, the white section.
Yeah.
And and another thing, in in response to your concerns, is again, we're not looking at this as a gravel pit. There's no scale house, there's no, you know, sales on site. That it's.
You you still, you could process some place out later, you know, down the road. You got it.
Are these houses? Or are they just properties?
Over here?
Yeah, like, like where you would dig it all out. This one and this one.
Each two property?
Yeah.
This is not part of any of the excavation area, is it, or?
No, so this is, we're we're over.
No, actually, this this is dark.
The yellow is farm.
The brown, that's, this is our kind of our limit work here.
Everything in yellow is what we're currently farming.
Right.
So so it feels like that.
To get all that.
Oh, no.
So there's an old, there's there's an old house and chamber, is that in that corner over there, that white house? That old, that, oh, the pink house, whatever, so my my old pink house is right there.
The house here.
Okay.
That's mine, yeah, okay.
My lovely number.
And then there's four decrepit ones across the street. Okay, and then the neighbors would be here.
Yeah, and over there is all the.
Do you have an anticipate, I mean, in all seriousness, how long do you expect this to take?
We, and we we actually looked at truck truck to based on we're thinking maybe five years, based on five years to do this, um and the valley. And I think, what was the number I used? I think it was based on twenty days a week, or a month, twenty days per month. Over the five years, it ended up being like ten trucks a day.
But if you have an active day, I mean, the idea would not necessarily be do ten trucks a day for four days, you'll do. Cause if it was gonna be that, there's, I mean, you could, but those are limitations that perhaps have some merit, right? If you had an operation that was tied to ag and it was a ten trips a day, because like whopping sandy gravel is what, ninety?
Yeah.
So there's a huge distinction between that, whopping sand gravel would never come in under this because they need ninety.
They can't do ten trucks a day, yeah, right.
So if you're, if you're, if your total daily max would be significantly lower.
The traffic would.
But that allows, that gives us room to create a distinction between mining.
Yeah, and and a.
Right.
Regret.
Because a c- a commercial for profit operation is not gonna come.
With ten trucks in their home, no.
But that, but that's not how you're gonna run. You're gonna run Monday, Tuesday, forty trucks, and then you'll be off, you know, like, and I recognize you don't even know that.
Yeah, you don't know. But no, it's not, it's.
Much rather than a few trucks and a lot of trucks.
Right, I mean, we can, I can certainly be accommodating with that, because that's not really, again, it's not really the the oper- the motive of operation here as far as like, I don't need fifty trucks today, I don't need whatever, how, point like, so however you wanna manage, however you wanna manage that.
Sure. It would ten truck today, they limit that, would make it a big distinction between, yeah, a gravel operation and a farming operation.
Well, in reality, would it? Because you you were thinking, you'd have one guy over there, and you'd probably fill it and run the truck.
Yeah, but I mean, I I was, so, okay, so we were just talking about like the week, as as far as like if it was ten loads a day.
That's on the average.
On the average, so so if we did forty loads in over the two days, is that going to be an issue and nothing for the rest of the week?
It would be for their buckers.
Yeah.
Twenty bucks.
The twenty trucks a day.
Yeah.
All right.
They're gonna just keep seeing it go in front of their house over and over.
It's still, I mean, you still need to make ten to eleven thousand trips total, to get it out there.
Right.
But it's like a daily example, today like today, we obviously wouldn't be able to haul. We had the rain day that we had last Thursday, we wouldn't be able to haul. So like, you know, like, there's gonna be, so there's, that's why I make.
Maybe fifteen's the number then.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that's the solution, I'm just literally thinking.
Yeah, so now, now it's slowed it downward, like, like, yeah, I always know. Legitimately traveled is not gonna build splash that.
Start true.
That's fine. So that's not really, that's not really, you know. They're not gonna come in and say, hey, listen, you wanna do the same thing, we're only having fifteen trucks a day, we'll never survive.
Well, like, we're dancing, how do you, how do you?
No, how you how, how you count the big truck? We we do all the time, I I was, it's kind of a running joke, like, who tell me to drive today? One.
No, there's both the.
They have, yeah, they have a system.
But if you farm, you're not gonna have them having haul slips.
No.
But if you're doing all the hauling, you can make them have account.
Complaints.
If someone complains and says, I saw forty today, you can go back to.
Or do a.
Say, how many did you do? Well, keep a log.
Yeah. Unless you made it really punitive, and if you're, if you docked, they they violated it three times, you'll lose your right to to continue or something. To the point where somebody wouldn't be willing to take the risk of violating their their limits.
And that's part of where the five hundred cubic yards came from, is that you have five hundred cubic yards, everything goes well, but another five hundred and another five hundred, and that chunk, I I mean, that's really small increments.
Yeah.
But it's on.
Complaints.
It's incumbent upon you to go through the process because then we won't get to continue if there's if you have an issue, but that.
Five hundred, what, that's fifty truckloads?
Uh, no, it's like twenty truckloads, like twenty-five truckloads.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
That's like, that's actually more than what you can put on for like for the this material, because if it has rock in it, then you're looking at sixteen. So added to the material, the more yards, so.
And you're talking that per what, a month of a year, or how often per phase?
Well, we, well, no, what I think what we did was, we landed on, if you want something that's as of right, although that's the wetland term, which is sort of exempt from the traditional review process, we, that should be capped at five hundred yards. Anything in excess.
But they're only limited at the far.
Limited clearing and regrading, not to exceed seven acres in an area or five hundred cubic yards.
For the entire project.
So I don't think there's anything that would prevent them from coming back.
Doing multiple projects.
In theory, um it was just trying to create, figuring out what size project is reasonable and tolerable based on volume and duration. And we went from the one hundred, basically increasing it five times, and then looking at some of the space, and now are you talking in administrative filing or having to come through here again? I think what they're requesting is an administrative review through the staff.
And I, I said, due to the neighbors who are what? Yeah. And that's the the piece that.
I'm sorry, I'm confused because you were just talking about doing like fifteen, like limiting to fifteen trucks a day, and then that would be like almost five hundred yards and or three hundred yards in one day.
So, yeah, that's, that's saying, it's really be be in every day.
Every day.
Here's my request for today, here's my request for today.
Where do you plan, and that's the the management, where do you plan on hauling it to the main shop?
No, uh go to um right, go to my recycle yard wherever.
It would be the ideal, because it's just gonna go right down.
Off the street.
Down, down the road, not really, right, down the road, yeah.
Yeah.
It stays on Chamberlain, it doesn't leave Chamberlain essentially, because my so.
So.
There's no, there's literally just three houses that we pass.
I'm thinking about impact for the well. If the the grain changes and you're down there by groundwater where you wanna be as a farm. It just seems like a, a you know, we'll say it over and over again, it's a significant excavation, you're going down pretty far to start, and then make your way back up to the road. We. You have the face, and then all that stuff is eight feet more than you're taking out um before you're regrading, so it, I'm just wondering if there's gonna be an impact on water level on the, the wetland systems themselves. It's pretty swampy back there, right? As you make your way to the backfield.
The backfield is dry as.
It is, but you have to cross the wetland to get there.
Right.
And if your final grade is really low, and you put manure all over it, it goes right in the groundwater. And I don't know if those people are on wells or not.
The, that's sort of the catch, I think, that I'm, you know, besides bonding for me, that 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 issue doesn't go away. But, you know, you're creating, in this case, creating farmland where it wasn't. And I I I don't know how much about wetlands regulations that you you're aware of, but like, you know, if you're a farm, you could drive a truck through the farm, through the wetland loopholes, like you don't have to worry about it. Right? So most farmland, that is naturally farmland is near wetland or a wetland, right? And so you have to, that's where you farm, that's, that makes sense. Create farmland where it doesn't exist, now that land now can, you can, you can basically bypass all the wetlands rules. So you have to be careful, I'm not saying not to do that, but like you have to think about that aspect of of how, you know, we're not just creating a larger lane in the planning and zoning regulations, but we're, we're allowing the possibility of completely bypassing projects past wetlands without even knowing nothing of it.
Well, no, that's not true, because you have to demonstrate that your project's not in.
All you gotta say is improve that you're a farm, and you can.
Yeah, but farmers are not allowed to fill a wetland, that that regulation ended a long time ago. You cannot fill a wetland, and you have to show, you have to show demonstration of how we're protecting the wetland. We've done this, we've done.
Yeah, I can tell you from years of being on the wetlands commission, farm people come in and wanna get away with a lot of stuff because they're farming. And and it's better, you know.
Understandable. I I'm just saying, like, we are not allowed to build a wetland. We can farm in the wetland, but we are not allowed to fill a wetland. We can farm up, well, technically, I think we're supposed to be farm up to the wetland. You can have pasture in a wetland.
I can. Barred on wetland. You look at the case law, you know, there's, you end up in fights because of it. Costly ones, even in this town, we had a costly fight over farming and weapons, basically, what it boiled down to. But um so I just, I just add that in there as, you know, we have to take that into account. I'm not saying, you know, and we shouldn't create farmland, I think it's probably a good idea, maybe, but.
And we are showing erosion controls, and we wouldn't expect you not to require erosion controls and and safeguards against any type of, uh, you know, sedimentation or runoff into the wetlands. That's, we would understand that that's gonna be a requirement that's in there now, and.
Yeah, I was just thinking more on the um finished grade and use and the impact that might have, it's just thinking about you're gonna be closer to the groundwater table because you know where it is, you can see it, and um what what impact that might have. And you do it in places where people are on the private wells than a button, is it going to? Yeah, because this is pretty. Yeah, and and so to craft an overarching text change to this and seeing like, I don't know how many of these would come on um to have to dig down that far in order to.
We're not really digging, fourteen feet is not that deep, I mean, that's, that's at the base, that dig gets less.
It's not like we're digging down into the water table here, we're we're essentially, we're taking this slope and we're flattening it out. There's already.
It's pretty flat out there now, and then it drops off, so you're going under, and to me, in my, in my vision, you're under and you're you're peeling back and, you know. How important, but it's, it's to get there, you gotta, gotta go in deep and then taper off. Right? If you go in, if you're taking a fourteen foot face and you're.
You're, all you're doing, you're basically, you're pushing that face back. So there's gonna be a face, there's always, there's gonna be a face, and you move it back, and and eventually, the face is gonna get shorter and shorter and shorter the further back you go. Because you're coming up from the bottom at a slope.
Okay, but all the stuff underneath there, under like between there and the south, because it's kind of level, like it's.
It's gonna be excavated.
Yeah, this kind of different line, those, you're at a hundred eighty-two here.
Down to, yeah, down at the bottom, it's all a slope.
So it basically goes from a hundred eighty-two up to one ninety, and then it drops back.
But yeah, like here, we're one eighty, one seventy-eight up to one ninety.
And then it drops back down.
And well, that continues to to go up.
Through the street.
And here, and here it drops back down. No, it's, it drops down, right in here, I think this is, so this is the second flat, this is one ninety-four, one ninety-four, and then this is the hole.
Okay.
But this is relatively flat, and then it drops to the, at the old vegetation.
Frank said this was an old dump or something like that years ago. Frank said that old dump or old gravel pit.
Which which explains why there's an old pit pit, and why there's all age.
You know, that. Yeah, dredging equipment in the, in the, in the big pond, it's not, there's dredging equipment in there, there's, yeah, there's a. What's that?
What they dredge it for.
Well, let let me tell you, I don't think that's a hundred percent natural, but we'll just say that, you know, from back in the day.
There's all contracts there, I don't know, in the water, just floating there, not gold.
That's, well, I mean, now to try to get back to a one size fits all.
Yeah, that's.
Regulation, I mean.
What if you tried to flip it and make it put it back in eighty fourteen?
That's, uh. Excavation and grading, or?
To have like a. Excavation. Well, because this is so unique, that's why.
Well, I'm just starting to think how that would apply to any other application, so now if we're saying that you can apply it under. That eight fourteen, and it doesn't necessarily have to be farm, is that what you're saying, or? Or have a farm restriction under eight fourteen?
Farm excavation.
From reclamation or?
Farmland reclamation section.
Separate farms or a. Couple of separate farm standards or exemption or however you want to put it. And uses, like Mike said, it's unenforced, I can come in and say, I wanna make this into farmland. And. By the time I'm done, the market changed and.
But if there's a deed restriction, how is that not?
Sell all material, then they walk away from it, so, okay. I don't care, let it sit there.
So I mean, that that is one question, is if I file a deed restriction against myself, what prevents me from removing it, we'd have to. Figure out what the language to that would be. Uh, the other thing that that, um. Kinda got us on the discussion of the topsoil and the, uh, in my original comment about six inches is that. As you're painfully aware, we had a development in another part of town not that long ago, that said, I need to put. Of infrastructure and pipe in the ground, cause the site's gravel and won't support well. Right, so my issue is. Eleven years from now, when he's so wildly successful, he's retired, and is not even worried about this anymore, what do we do with this piece? Property, because if it 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 won't. Necessarily support anything else, maybe that's a problem, maybe it's not, but we've certainly run into that where where that's. Corey Meadows could not, could not support, and they had to run that pencil line all the way down through to the tune of one million plus dollars. And then they came back and said, because of this cost, we need increased density, so so all of those things came from a site that doesn't support the use that the zone intends. So we're trying to figure out how. The site doesn't become completely useless. Um, and if it's going to be, then. The ten year restriction ought to just be a perpetual one. But I, we already have had that discussion, but. But. You know, we need to be more eyes wide open to, can we reutilize the property based upon how it's gonna be left, and the answer is no. I think that's a a point of consideration, although I could argue against it, because if you can't do anything else with it, then it's gonna have to be add.
Right, if we're a larger development that's abutting, needed that piece of property.
Right, for density, but if it doesn't support septic. You're not gonna really have too much else there, but the issue of groundwater and adjacent wells is still something that have to be. Not my area expertise.
Which is something if a farmer had to do it, wouldn't have to evaluate.
But there's, but because of the significant amount of material, farmers can push things around and they can do all that stuff, but the site is already farming and it's not. It's not happening to the to the degree that it's happening here, because the. The farmer might move some stuff, he may spread manure in a wetland, he may maybe close to groundwater, but those are all existing conditions. We're going from. Something to where it is now is significantly different. And the question is, does the commission allowing that activity create? Something beyond just the short term nuisance?
The good thing is your haul, a lot of stuff up. That's the big. Catch.
I mean, I've been racking my brain, I've read up on as much of this stuff as possible, um. My my partner John, who was here last time, he's he's president of the board of the R C and B, he's written planning for it, he helped write planning for agriculture, they do it every couple of years. This is something that. He said, we've got a lot of involvement, I just, I.
Did he have any? Thoughts about this?
No, I'm just wondering if there's, if this is a list sir question. If this, if this bridge has already been crossed by other communities, East Wind is hardly the most agricultural community connected with. Certainly others that are as or more.
Especially some of the. Hillier towns that have some real interest challenging slopes.
I have plenty of examples of what not to, how not to do it, when we talked about in our first meeting, but I'm. Trying to understand if there are other towns that have a mechanism for reducing, right? Bonding, you know, but there's some of these other things too, is. Where's the middle ground? Where's the stuff that we can? Sort of figure out a way through, and what are the things that you think might be reasonable to actually? Produce or provide or review or whatever it is, um.
I mean, I I've kinda got a middle headed, you know, there's probably a number that we could come to saying, okay, up to a certain amount of. Cubic yards is is. Reasonable beyond that, now you're a. A mining operation. So unfortunately, it may not apply to this situation, but it would probably help other situations.
They might be stripping operations.
This is a large amount of dirt. Just looking to maximize the product.
Is the eight acres?
Yeah, it doesn't, this year, this was cleared, but. It's within this, uh. For the majority of it was there. It's actually all through there. But this is where we gain, yeah, we're gaining it on this pit face, this because there's. Piles all over, and this, we're gaining where we fill that hole. Man, at this point, I I like Mike's ideas to, is to reach out to other municipalities and see if, uh, anybody else has ever tackled something. Similar to this. Guidance out there.
Honey, where this one's gonna list her?
Yeah. Or just go, sorry. You can certainly figure out if there are any, if anybody has.
I think the truck, truck trip will definitely be something that will have a lot.
So the two things. Which the volume.
I don't know where your access road is coming out, Chamber. Chamberlain, but you're right around the corner, your plant's over here, right? Right over here.
You just have to cross when you go. So that will withstand.
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna look for some more guidance on this.
All right, well, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Yeah, I. I'm just wondering if this, I mean, the John that go. Very involved in the policy. I don't know, I mean, it's possible.
She was, I hear a ton when we were doing our right to farm, right, she was going to different towns trying to get more towns to do that.
The planning for actual, which I have.
Might know somebody that knows, so.
Yeah.
I'll give her a call.
There's nothing, we went through this last time, there's nothing to be spoken about this. Which is crazy.
Yeah, cause I mean, the idea of incentivizing the development of more farmland is is a great idea.
Yeah, but.
Yes, I mean, this is huge.
Well, you wouldn't be such bad people in the hall, so.
He's got a great vision.
Probably tag this one down and trust this person somewhat, and the bond, you know, trust and verify. Uh, but like to like make a tax amendment of this, it's just causing yourself trouble.
Yes, it does, I mean, that's, and that's the thing, is when we start listing up all these kinds of conditions. That's what goes to my mind, well, that's especially.
You guys did it back door.
And the state's definition of ag excludes the extraction of gravel. It's not, it's not considered agriculture, not can be facilitated, but. You know, demolishing a building to facilitate what you're gonna do next doesn't mean you're exempt from the building code.
There's all kinds of ways you're gonna apply this, exactly.
There's, there's a path forward, it's just a matter of it that gets them far enough away from the ag, from the gravel rags that they're comfortable with.
Well, they, it sounded to me, they wanted no bond, no nothing, but just like let us go do it.
I'm not, yeah, I mean.
Well, I'm sure we'll be talking about again in another meeting. We have anything correspondence at all?
Other than your books for your webinar.
We got the books, but we didn't get a phone number to. For a login.
You didn't get a login? We had, um, registered everyone by their email. Okay. You have that.
At the book.
Yeah.
May I have, I'm trying to see, I have the. I have all the emails from public consulting.
No.
I'll have her call, I'll let you know what the status is.
It was like, uh, something, hey, man, it was quick on that, and you could go in, but I didn't get.
Yeah, they may not have sent them yet.
Oh, no, I know, and they went out, it's like.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay.
You did not.
I got mine.
On a business meeting, I don't think it's very productive for us to kind of cover this stuff without the rest of our members here, so we'll. We'll push that off to another meeting, talking about our. You kind of clear training. We have no need for executive session, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, it's eight thirty-two P M.
Is there a, we have motion on tables, there a second? All those, any further discussion, all those in favor, I. You nervous, we are returned.